Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for attending. Appreciate everybody being here this evening. I'll start this work session in a minute. First, I would like to ask everybody to stand for the mic. I'm delighted that you're here today. The United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under your God, equal to physical, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm going to turn the mic over to Dr. Keith for a brief comments before we start.
Thank you, Keith. Certainly want to welcome everyone. It's an important night and a moment. I'll pass the mic to Dr. McGordy. We'll begin with our discussion on the support topic. I also wanted having opportunity to take this moment and recognize our Board of Education. This is Board of Education Recognition Week. So as a small token of our appreciation, there is a high from No Applies here locally. And just a card saying thank you. So a lot of countless hours of volunteering. And we certainly appreciate your service on behalf of the children in school districts. So thank you so much. And Megan, I'll pass the mic to you, Megan. And if you want to borrow, you're going to get your mic. That's Megan Trish, you can pass that. That's ready. Go pass that one down to share.
Thank you. Thank you, Dad. Thank you for Board of Education for this opportunity, for the team to address the votes and to share kind of all the good work that we do on behalf of our students. So tonight you're going to hear from the clinical team here at the War and Peace School District. And who better to be here to talk to you about the work that our students than the people that do it every day? So our students' physical and mental health remains the highest priority for us here in the district. Because fundamental safety and security needs to be met before they can engage in the learning process. Our approach is to educate the whole child so that they can engage actively in our learning process. Our mission is to continue to be at the forefront of building students' social, emotional, foundational skills. New York State has identified mental health education as a priority. And we move forward to consistently create a K-12 approach for our students' mental health and wellness. Our goal remains to educate students and empower them. Our mission is to create learning environments that decrease negative statements and encourage students to communicate and develop healthy, resilient behaviors. I want to thank the team that's here this evening. They were all thrilled to come and talk a little bit about the work that they do and to share kind of their initiatives in the school community. And they consistently work hard and they help our students to create safe learning environments so that every child feels safe and encouraged so that they can become their best selves. Can I turn it over to Alexandra?
Hello? Good? Thank you, Megan. Okay, so here at Warwick, our main vision is to make our children feel good, to make them feel safe, giving them strategies on how to handle stress on a day-to-day basis, how they relate to others, and most importantly, make the right decisions in their lives. Our district has had to place a crisis team to react from alerts or situations that might be emergency-related. We have our clinical team here tonight to talk about methods and procedures and policies that we do in case of these situations arise.
So we're going to go on.
Our EDIS program stands for Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports. It is really the framework for our War and Park lessons, or pause lessons. Wars and Paws are our acronyms at Park in Sanderville for our building behavioral expectations. Counselors and psychologists actually push into the classrooms on a four-day cycle to the various classes. And they do approximately 13 to 15 lessons as a whole class each trimester. The lessons are broken down by various topics depending on grade levels. But some examples would be EDIS, which actually teaches our behavioral expectations to the students and kind of show them what the behavior should look like in the different areas of the school. So that would be like the bathrooms, recess, lunch, the classrooms, and the school bus. It's also broken down into safety lessons, which we do in collaboration with our SRO in each building for the younger children that focus is really on things such as knowing their names, their addresses, their phone numbers, stranger safety, things such as that. Whereas for the older elementary, we also incorporate internet safety, things such as learning about passwords and why passwords shouldn't be shared with other people, electronic use, following parental guidelines as far as what websites and what things you're allowed to go on. Other topics, I guess, would be study skills, organization, friendship, which really encompasses a whole array of lessons, everything from positive and negative friendship traits and how they hinder our relationships with other people, recognizing that all emotions are okay, healthy ways to express both our positive and our negative emotions, and learning about effective communication skills and iMessages, and providing the kids with opportunities to actually role-play and practice some of these strategies. We even do things such as learning what a social filter is and what that means and how to role-play those kinds of scenarios. That's just like a couple of the topics that we do. It really kind of depends on the grade level. It also depends on the needs that might be going on in each individual classroom throughout the year. But it's a significant amount of time that is actually spent in the classrooms. Each time we go into the classrooms, it's approximately a 40-minute block of time that we're in there. And that's kind of what it looks like as far as the lessons for the elementary.
Did you want to say his question at the end? Go through the presentation?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I guess I'm on the next slide. Also, theme participation weeks for elementary. We have two main, I guess, theme weeks that we do. One is next week, which is our National Red Ribbon Week. And though the message is really centered around being drug and alcohol-free at the elementary level, we really focus on healthy bodies and healthy minds and making, you know, positive choices. In order to address this with the kids, what we do is for our theme week, we have something different each day. So for example, for next week, what we're doing for the students, we ask them to kind of dress respectfully with whatever the theme is. So on Monday, they're respecting our bodies and brains and making healthy choices. So we just ask all students and staff to wear something red to pledge for a healthy lifestyle. So we keep it kind of simple. On Tuesday, the theme is Your Choices Are Heirs to Your Dreams, so wear your favorite pajamas. Wednesdays, don't get tied up with negative choices. Wear a tie pledging to make a good choice for a happy and healthy lifestyle. Thursdays, sock it to unhealthy and unsafe choices by wearing bright socks to focus on positive choices for a positive future. And then we end it with Our Future Is Too Bright for Drugs and We've Got the Spirit to Drink Big. Wear purple and gold or Park Avenue spirit wear. And you know what's successful? The kids get excited, you know, they come in, they're dressed, they're talking about it, they're talking about making great choices. So it's just kind of a really simple but positive way to kind of, you know, put the light on healthy bodies and healthy minds for the kids. So it's a lot of fun for them. We do something similar in January. January is to kind of highlight the National No Name Calling Week that takes place across the country. Again, the elementary level, we kind of choose to flip it a little bit. And there is a theme that's linked to the initiative, which is to celebrate kindness. So we kind of really, instead of emphasizing the no-name calling as the major theme for the kids, we talk about celebrating kindness. And then we kind of address the behaviors within a theme week itself. So for example, we don't have an activity planned yet, but for each year, we do a big building-wide activity. So last year's was Plant Seeds of Kindness, and each student had to decorate a flower with a positive affirmation on it. And then each flower was planted in the Kaius Garden, which was on display in the lobby for the remainder of the year. So it was pretty cool. The kids could see their artwork, they could read the affirmations that were put up there, and they talked about it as a class, we talked about it as a building. And then each day was something, something new. It always starts out with wearing blue, which is the color of bullying awareness, to show their support for No Name Calling Week. Then we followed it with something like wearing inappropriate sweatshirt or sweatpants to show that it's no sweat to be a friend to somebody. Our theme on another day was to wear red, white, and blue to show that we stand united against harmful words and actions. And then again, we end on Friday, we're wearing purple and gold, our district colors, to reinforce the idea that we are all on the same team. So this year it'll look a little bit different, but that kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of how we pick a theme each year, how we pick a building activity, and, you know, give the kids an opportunity to kind of display their artwork, talk about it, and, you know, kind of explore it a little bit more and a little bit deeper level with their teachers.
So in the middle school, we have many spirit weeks throughout the school year as well to foster a sense of positive school culture. So we too engage in many things the elementary school does. So we partake in the National Theme Weeks, such as No Name Calling Week, Red Ribbon Week, and Random Acts of Kindness Week. So kind of circling back to what the elementary was talking about, at the middle school level, Red Ribbon Week is last week, October, it's focused on keeping kids drug-free. In middle school, we have students make pledges on positive choices that they choose on small red ribbons. These ribbons are then posted on a larger red ribbon as essentially healthy pledges, and those hang in the cafeteria. So for the duration of the school year, they can refer back to their pledges that they made in the fall, and they can take a look at that as the year progresses. This year's theme for Red Ribbon Week is Celebrate Life Drug-Free. Each day of the week, we read a back-up on prevention, healthy choices over our morning announcements. Students will be invited to stay after school, who are going to have a writing, a positive message on the sidewalk, the sidewalk chomp, 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 chomp day. And we will continue to partner during Red Ribbon Week with the War and Peace Coalition, who will be coming in during our lunch periods. Orange County and various school districts do have our students focused on healthy choices. Our students today attended the Red Ribbon Week kickoff, and there is another Red Ribbon Week event that they are going to on Monday of next week as well. We also participate in No Name Calling Week, which is organized by K-12 educators and students across the country. And the purpose of it is to essentially end name-calling and bullying in schools. It's a project that sees the focus, national attention, on the problem of name-calling in schools, and to provide students and educators with the tools and inspiration to launch an ongoing dialogue about ways to eliminate name-calling. So at the middle level, it is more about talking through things, making positive choices, especially amongst peers. And then with Random Acts of Kindness Week, that occurs the third week of February, and it ends with Random Acts of Kindness Day, which will be February 17th through 23rd. And so we designed to help schools and students create a positive culture where essentially they're choosing kind. Previously, what we've done is had students leave positive notes on lockers, cubbies, and desks for one another, and they'll do it on a random desk or a random cubbie sold to a student. All of a sudden, a student will walk in, they'll see it on their locker, "Have a great day, you're special, you're a rock star," and it just really sets a positive tone and a positive culture for the weekend of the day. We've also created various in-and-out classroom activities centered around choosing kind. And once again, that will be February 17th of this year.
Thank you. So I'm going to continue with the participation weeks at the high school. A lot of, a lot of, a lot of things were already mentioned, but this upcoming week is Red Ribbon Week. So as Mr. Yakowitz said, the theme is Celebrate Life. Today, what we did, a lot of us meeting Mr. Radon and a group of middle school students and some high school students, we went over to the, let me just get this right, we went over to the Orange County Government Center and go shoot with Chelsea Fox, Mary Fox's daughter, and Taylor N., some teachers that were on the same, same club. And we tied ribbons around 100 trees over at the, at the government center. All the schools represented, all right? Just want to let you know that. So we do have pictures, we will be sharing them. And Mr. Steve Newhouse, Senator Carlucci, and Assemblyman Schmidt officially declared October 23rd through the 31st Red Ribbon Week in Orange County, and it was a great sentiment to see. It was very nice. At the high school, in addition to our spirit weeks, that promotes a positive culture, we do have our Red Ribbon Week coming up, like Mr. Yakowitz said. On Monday, we're going to celebrate it by wearing red day. Wearing red, Tuesday is pajama day, which we'll have at the elementary schools as well. We switched it up, though, not socked it, Wednesday is jersey day, and the Community Prevention Coalition will be attending and promoting ways to celebrate life. So as students, like Mr. Yakowitz said, will be doing something similar, will be making pledges, including ones that are going to be stacking themselves and others and how they live a healthy lifestyles. Thursday is crazy hat day, so if you want to stop up, please do, and bring your crazy hat. And Friday is purple and gold day. And I'm just going to jump down to Monday. So on Monday, the 24th, we have about 25 students, both from the middle school and the high school, heading over to the Emergency Services Center to kick off Red Ribbon Week. And it's a county-wide event, there will host informational speakers and breakout sessions. And students are, we told the students to kind of come with their thoughts and ideas about how to address the many issues that the kids are facing today. Also in the school right now, the Student Senate, under the leadership of Mr. O'Brien, selling pink t-shirts, or sold pink t-shirts for breast cancer awareness month, this month. And they're going to be wearing them tomorrow to promote breast cancer awareness. All the proceeds will go to the Breast Cancer Awareness Foundation. We also participate in other events that Mr. Yakowitz mentioned, and we're really hoping to raise our, so.
Good evening. I'd like to speak briefly about our commitment to mindfulness. We're just finishing up a three-year partnership with Alice Moore, I'm sorry, Allison Moore in from Sensational Kids, who provided professional development and training for our teachers and staff in grades K through 12. This need for mindfulness certainly came out of a national need to support our students, even our youngest learners, with dealing with stress and anxiety, whether from school or outside sources. So it really was, you know, put into place to help all of our students. And when we talk about mindfulness, sometimes people are like, well, what are you talking about when you're, when you speak of mindfulness? And it really talks about states of being. And those, those states of being include being kind, calm, being balanced in your energy levels, being focused, being connected with others, being ready to learn, and certainly being ready to restore our actions or behaviors as well. Our teachers, including teachers, our help, our mental health providers, such as our guidance counselors, school psychologists, administrators, were all trained in these very simple lessons, short, simple lessons that do three things. They redirect her focus, they calm those students that they have anxiety or frustration, and they also energize to engage and motivate students. They use these, whether it's in the classroom as brain breaks. All of our PE classes use a mindfulness activity to either start their PE class or end their PE class. Our counselors use them in sessions. And I, as an administrator, even use them dealing with students that are upset or in crisis. We got those bunny breaths down pat to use, and they're short, and they're sweet, and they're powerful. You know, this collaboration is an effort to really focus on self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, as well as empathy and compassion, and of course, relationship building with students. So we've really seen kids enjoy and benefit from using these short little lessons throughout their day. I know Mr. Radon was going to talk a little bit about what it looks like in the middle school.
I know. And he was right out of excellent description of really what mindfulness is, and really I, I know what we're doing at the middle school level sounds very similar to that. So I'll just speak briefly about some of the things that you'll see when you walk around the middle school. And at the beginning of the school day, you'll often see teachers checking on the students and maybe ringing a bell, having the students sit there until the bell stops making the noise and calming them down. After recess, after physical education class, those high-energy times of the day, you'll see the teachers doing the same sort of thing. In the morning announcements, oftentimes will throw a mindfulness moment in. At faculty meetings, after those stressful days, Ms. Diablos will throw a mindfulness moment, maybe for herself too, but for, for these staff members. But it certainly is implemented into our, our, you know, in our middle school, we do use it in physical education classes as well. And again, great job, Ms. Mariah describing that.
Yeah, so at the high school level, you know, just to come to the setup, right? At the high school level, the students are a little more able to articulate. So at the high school, some of the classroom teachers have been trained to help the students find safe and simple methods to de-escalate some of these techniques. Create the exercises, focusing skills, and other, other activities to relieve stress. We use the mood meter at the high school, as well as, like Chris had mentioned, the check-in. At the high school level, the, you know, the check-in enables the students to feel that they're part of the community, allows their voices to be heard, and builds trust. It's a great way to engage with each other and, and as people, or really dive into the content, hopefully, at least in them being engaged more in the content, because they have an opportunity to kind of share and express themselves before really jumping in. So, you know, as my colleague mentioned, mindfulness is about being conscious and aware of oneself. And our, our hope is that through these activities, that we can continue to build that awareness of consciousness.
Okay, Yale Ruler. Ruler actually stems from the work of the gentleman Lee Mark Brackeck, who's actually the founder and director of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, and is the lead developer of Ruler. The Ruler's an acronym that stands for Recognizing, Understanding, Labeling, Expressing, and Regulating Your Emotions. And it's meant to support us all in increasing our emotional intelligences, you know, not just students, but students and staff. And what you see on the slide there is a picture of the mood meter, and, you know, you'll find those pretty much most places in the building. I can speak for elementary, you'll find them in the main lobby, you'll find them in most classrooms, offices. Basically, it's divided into four quadrants, as you can see. So the upper left quadrant is a high-energy, unpleasant emotions that will be there. The left bottom would be your low-energy, unpleasant emotions. And then the upper right would be high-energy, pleasant emotions. And lower right would be low-energy, pleasant or positive emotions. What we've done is we've kind of armed the kids and kind of gone over with them like their own emotional vocabulary. And there's 12 different emotions per grade level, is how they started. So kindergarten has 12 vocabulary words, first grade has 12, and so on. So by the time they get to the middle school, they already have this pretty wide array of emotional vocabulary. And then we show them how to plot themselves on the mood meter. And a lot of the classroom teachers actually use it in the morning when they come in to kind of try to get a gauge on how the kids are doing. How everybody uses it is completely different. Some teachers will use it for a gauge when a kid comes in, sees it's a little bit off, they might pull them aside, talk to them, ask them where they are on the mood meter, and kind of we teach them, you know, how to get from one place on the mood meter to another. So for example, if they come in and they identify that they're in the blue quadrant, which is kind of low-energy and unpleasant, we might talk to them about ways that they can kind of shift, you know, to maybe they green to the right, or how they can shift to the yellow, or, and we kind of work with them on strategies, you know? And it's based on age-appropriate developmental mind strategies. The kids all know it. If you were to walk in our building and pretty much ask any kid in kindergarten for fourth grade, they could pretty much go right up to that mood meter and tell you where they fall, and they'd be accurate probably 90-plus percent of the time. So it's kind of pretty cool to see how quickly they kind of catch on to it. The other thing that each school has that's very specific to the school is each school has kind of adopted their own charter. And the charter is basically an expression of values and norms introduced into each individual school building, intended to make all people, meaning staff as well, safe, welcome, and heard. So what we did at, like at the elementary buildings, is we kind of took a survey of all the staff in the building. We did this a couple of years ago. And we basically asked them to give their top six, top six responses of how they want to feel when they come to work each day. And we tallied all the responses, we shared all the responses with tech staff, and we took the top six, and we incorporated those into a charter, which we had made into a big poster, everybody signed it. Basically, everybody was committing themselves to taking those six things that they chose and taking, and using their part to make that happen in our building. So for example, for Park, the six most voted, I guess, words that people wanted were supported. They wanted to feel inspired, appreciative, they wanted to feel connected to others, valued, and respected. So once we did that, you know, again, we have the charter made, we have people sign it, and that's something that we can kind of come back to and, you know, revise it as we want from year to year, especially as there's a large turnover in staff, we can kind of revisit it and kind of see. You know, so each building is kind of specific to obviously the culture in your building, because every building has its own culture, its own environment, and I think it really has kind of taken on a really positive, positive thing in our building, it's kind of taken off, you know? And I think one of the things that kind of surprised people was, as we're teaching this to kids, we realize as adults that we're often not doing this. You know, we don't think about, well, how do we get from having the red today? What do I do with that? You know, and how do I set an example for the kids if I'm in the red? If I don't know how to get to the green, or, you know, or the yellow? So, you know, in order to get that, to get myself there, I need to be able to also, you know, show the kids that I can do it.
The elementary school's done a great job of stealing our thought there. Have you seen the overlap with Ruler? So in the middle school, the mood meter as well is featured in all of our classrooms, and it has become part of the language because as it has really cycled up from the elementary to middle level, as all of our middle schoolers are familiar. And really, the way, the mood meter, the way the four pieces of the Ruler framework, which I'm going to dive into momentarily, are used, depends on the teacher, depends on the class, depends on the subject, but it is being used school-wide, and I would absolutely say it's embedded in the middle school culture at this point. The mood meter is a whole bunch of descriptive words describing how people feel. So essentially, it steers you from saying, hey, how are you today? I'm good, to opening up a conversation, how are you feeling today? And that now elongates the conversation, it gets a staff member to engage with a student. And if a student is saying, hey, I'm feeling ecstatic today, or, hey, I'm feeling enraged today, we know which way that student's going to go, and we are hoping to supply them with the resources, you know? As an administrator also saying, hi, all staff members in the morning sometimes, you know, be like, hey, how are you? Want a quick hello sometimes, no offense to anybody. Sometimes, I'm like, easy today. Tell me why, you know? Dives into a little bit more of a conversation, so it's a great tool for adults as well. The Ruler framework itself is made up of the mood meter, which is the check-in piece. So moving students from feeling pleasant to feeling sad to feeling angry and feeling easy to uneasy and going ahead and really getting up to where they need to go. Then we have the charter. At the middle school, our staff members as well made a charter they are hanging in the classrooms. We didn't take six, so we took five at the middle school, and those five are hanging. And it says essentially the pathway of where we want to be and how we are going to get and how we are going to get there. In the classroom, the way that the charters are, to start the year when teachers go over their rules, we ask them to create classroom charters. And essentially, the charters need to be something tangible. So how do you want to feel in class and how are we going to get there? What are your expectations in class and how are we going to get there? So it can't be something that doesn't have a way to essentially get to the endpoint or have a movement within. Another component of the Ruler framework is what's referred to as the meta-moment. And that's something that we engage in, which I'll talk about momentarily in the Roar lessons. The meta-moment is training students, training staff to ultimately take a step back before you react. So ultimately, thinking before you act in a situation. So it allows us to ask ourselves, how would my best self react in this situation before I actually react? And what strategy cannot use so my actions reflect my best self. And then the last piece of the Ruler framework is what's known as the blueprint. And the blueprint we utilize when we are dealing with discipline, when we are having student mediation, when we may be having staff mediation or just uncomfortable discussions at times. And it allows children and adults ultimately to consider disagreement from each other's perspective as well as their own. So it allows them to develop empathy towards how each one is feeling and allows them to work collaboratively to identify healthy solutions to conflict. So rather than just going ahead and looking at the code of conduct and you got in a physical altercation, here's your consequence for it, going ahead and actually, why did we get into the physical confrontation? What did you say? What did you say? How were you feeling? How were you feeling? And getting that to develop that empathy for one another. So that ties into our lessons at the middle school, which are our Roar lessons. So at the middle school, we use Roar, similar to the Roar at the elementary. And Roar lessons are monthly character ed. lessons that occur school-wide. They occur the third Wednesday of each month. And all the lessons either occur at the same time or during the same subject area to make sure that all our students get the opportunity to partake. The lessons have evolved each year that we've had this in place. And they evolve based upon feedback. We have the Roar Committee that meets once a month, made up of teachers. And we get teacher feedback and we also get utilized our data from student performance and student behavior and look to see what we need to incorporate in these characteristic pieces, what we need to talk to students about and really bring it in the 20-minute lesson that we have built in. Each lesson begins with a mindfulness moment, followed by a mood meter check-in. And then it focuses on one of the characteristics of portrait of a graduate. So in talking about collaboration, then students work through, let's say, role-playing activities, on what it is to be a positive collaborator and how we collaborate in and out of the classroom. What it means to be a positive communicator and what does that look like in and out of the classroom. And then we bring the Ruler tools into those responses. So they're doing a role-playing scenario, they're collaborating, what positive collaboration looks like, what negative collaboration looks like, if you're utilizing the meta-moment in that situation, how would the characters in the role-playing truthfully think before they react into it? And bringing all those pieces in. And then we end each Roar lesson once again with a mood meter check-in. And check-in with students, see their mood shift from 20 minutes ago when we started the lesson to where we are now.
Okay, good evening. It should come as no surprise that sometimes our students struggle, whether it be elementary, middle or high school. And those struggles take on many different forms, right? Sometimes they're basic behavioral issues. Your standard excessive talking during a lesson, bothering your friends. At the very young levels, kindergarten perhaps, something that if it took place in a home, we would call tantrum. Other times, the issues are more social or emotional. You know, sometimes we have children who really struggle to even come into the school building. They're in various forms of crises. So we see all of that, I'm sure you'll hear more about that at the upper levels. But there are mechanisms in school to handle all this stuff. And so we have what we call the Instructional Support Team at the elementary school, IST, built in part in San Francisco. And one of the strengths of this team and approach is that on the team sit many different staff members. So you have very different lenses. Myself as principal, Mrs. Mayr is the guidance counselor. Another counselor may be there, psychologist, academic intervention, teachers who have specialties in reading and dealing with struggling students. You have our OT and speech person there as well too. So the strength of the approach really is in the very different lens that each staff member has. So we really have a very comprehensive approach to address the issues being described. So first and foremost, of course, we want to make sure that the teacher is empowered to handle problems within the classroom. But sometimes when these issues persist, they come to us and describe the issue, have some data. You know, sometimes anecdotal, other times, you know, very quantitative. And we sit there and have very robust conversations about, you know, recommending strategies the teacher can try in the classroom over a period of time, typically six to eight weeks. And we progress monitor that approach. Sometimes we're very successful, other times we need to do something different and really intensify the support. So some things you can see are behavior plans being used. By behavior plan, you know, sometimes that looks different today than they may be used to. So students really, I think, respond very well to positive acknowledgements. So when we describe a targeted problem behavior and whilst they focus on something being described to us, we want to positively acknowledge students' efforts when they're succeeding. And we see that sometimes they respond very well to that. We may recommend individual or group counseling with the guidance counselor. And sometimes, you know, as things kind of get, when we're less successful, we have outside supports as well too. But again, the thing I want to highlight here is that, you know, oftentimes we don't realize that so many different people come together very regularly to discuss students that are struggling. We typically talk about this when we have academic issues. But the same mechanism or process exists for students who are struggling socially and emotionally. And of course, regardless of success or lack thereof, we continue to have conversations about the course of the year so that these students remain on our radar so as to speak and never fall through the cracks.
Hello, I'm going to speak a little bit about the same thing at the middle school. We call our response intervention is really the same except in terms of individuals that are at that meeting. We have administration, there's clinical support staff, either the psychologist yet or guidance counselor. We definitely have a special education teacher that sits on the committee, a general education teacher. And then these specialties related services, occupational therapy, speech that is needed. The RTI committee is really twofold. And you know what? Tonight we're talking about more the mental health wellbeing and that can absolutely be a reason for a referral there. The other is academic and sometimes those things are intertwined, sometimes they can be separate. But we do have a lot of behavioral interventions that we can put in place should there be any concerns. And a lot of times, it can be attendance, it can be follow-through, it can be that there is a behavior that is happening in the classroom or happening in the school day that we really need to look at, assess. We have behavior plans we do. Part of our Roar as well, we do have like a ticket system that's school-wide for the kids. And that's something, especially in fifth and sixth, that the kids start to, you know, wean a little bit in seventh and eighth. But for fifth and sixth, if they're willing to do a lot with that ticket and we have that responsibility, outstanding choices, acceptance and judgment of respect. So those type of things that they can earn and that we can utilize. We have check-in and checkout systems, a little less formal in these years. In terms of that, where maybe a kid comes to you that has a certain list of things they're trying to do for that day and they'll check in with myself and/or maybe one of the other guidance counselors or school psychologist. And then we check out with them at the end of the day to see how they're doing. We have behavior intervention plans that we put in place as well. So that RTI committee really serves kind of that dual purpose to attack it from the academic standpoint and also from the media standpoint. The other meeting that we have that we've put into place under George publicly for the last three, four years, I think we started in pre-COVID and it's definitely, I think, been really needed after coming back from COVID, is our CAP team meeting, which is our counselors, our administrators and our psychologists. And that is one time monthly that we meet to really discuss a lot of the students that maybe are on multiple radars or maybe someone else knows and we need to kind of troubleshoot, come together to discuss some of those social emotional concerns. We look at a lot of data at these meetings, we look at the discipline referrals, we look at the attendance, those are always huge, ongoing classroom concerns, wellness checks and check-ins that we need. And it really is a great opportunity for us to kind of put our heads together and strategize different kind of strategies that we can use to help those students, to help the teachers and to increase that collaboration between home and school.
Thank you, Ted. At the high school, we have a similar team called the Child Study Team and we fly weekly action. And the team consists of our school counselors, the administrators, school psychologists and health professionals. Heather Rover comes up to join us, sometimes our school nurse. The purpose of our meetings is really to kind of find out if there are any kids that are in crisis or have issues, whether it's social, academic. If we see changes in, rapid changes in behavior, all of a sudden we have a lot of discipline referrals on the student. There's chronic absenteeism. As I said, academic issues, sometimes the counselors are referring to family issues that are going on and a lot of us wouldn't know about it unless the students share it, but the counselors often know. And we also look at students hygiene, they're coming in with the same clothes and they don't seem to maybe have the greatest hygiene for some reason, often kind of all of a sudden. So those are just some of the things that we look at, a lot of things come up at these meetings. But as we discuss the students that we're concerned about, we make recommendations how we can grow and how we can help them. So some of that comes down to just counseling within the school. If it's a family issue that we're aware of, we also reach out to Meryce, which is an organization on the outside that helps support families to help them get back on track. And the parents, the families have to treat it and often do it very well. We call home to find out a little bit more from the parents and that's the goal. We also contact teachers. Sometimes we see behaviors and we follow up by talking to the teachers. If we know about it, about family crisis, whether the teachers know to be aware so they can look for any good behaviors and keep an eye on things. We speak with students often. We also have an instructional support team at the school where there is an academic issue. We will meet with the family, the students, the teachers will come together and talk about the issues that are consistent throughout all the classes and come up with a plan to help them, to help those students get back, if reasonable. And they're part of that plan and they, you know, do gradually. And we just kind of put in some in-house combinations to help these students. And sometimes it's just a little extra push that they need to get them back. So we work on that and sometimes it's a behavioral support plan as well. We also will go to outside referrals if necessary. We have the IBT program over at FOCIS for restart. We have the Orange County Mental Health in our districts and sometimes we will make referrals there. And often, we'll do wellness checks. We have our SRO, we'll go to the house, if you haven't seen a student for a while, they'll check in, just check on the family, check on the student, see what's coming on. So there's a lot of ways that we reach out. Again, we meet every two weeks and then to start our meeting, we kind of check in and talk about what we did in the meeting before and where we are in the process. And then sometimes things come off our list and that's what we ultimately look for. So, thank you.
Any questions, any suggestions? I'm the mental health counselor for the Orange County Mental Health. Thank you for having me here tonight. So the Orange County Mental Health partner, the former Valley Central School teacher, to offer mental health services to his students and families. And as the mental health counselor, I mean...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you can play a little closer. Not that I'm very close, but I'm...
I'd be happy if your students and your families to provide mental health services, counseling, therapy. I guess to be another support for your family and your students. And to make that process as easy and accessible to them as possible and to help them navigate that whole process because it can be overwhelming for some families, you know, to even initiate it, to start the process together and to help therapy. And just want to thank you for having me here tonight.
Thanks for being here.
I'm talking a little bit about the Cornell Cooperative in terms of providing procedures with partnership and workshops that can broaden their knowledge of how to help children with autism in terms of educating them on how stressed and impacted nervous system and just serving as their whole classroom and how important they are in terms of being the main point of contact in terms of being sometimes the first point of contact to observe if something, if they're struggling with something in any of these pieces. And to not just ignore that in the classroom, to act on it, to implement. We think that we're a third in the cooperative in terms of trying to help them to actually release that, you know, they are at peace and they've been learning and thrive in the classroom and they're not under by any stress or anxiety or depression.
We've also been coordinating parent workshops from Cornell Cooperative for many, many years, actually. And the last few years after COVID, we actually made the transition from in-person parent workshops. And we tried to do a virtual to kind of see how we would make out. You know, we had a little bit of reservation about doing it, not having people there face-to-face. But actually, we've seen great results. There's been a very big uptick in the parental participation by doing it online. We have it currently going on right now, it's on Thursday nights, it's six virtual sessions. Gave us a little bit more flexibility and then a little bit more flexibility as far as the times. We were always trying to put it a little bit later in the evening so parents had an opportunity to get their kids completely in bed and to be home, you know, not having to worry about a babysitter. We actually have 46 families registered this year, which is significantly higher than we've ever had before. We actually have a waiting list this year. And the focus of the workshop, I mean, there's a lot of flexibility as far as what we do, but there has been a big request for the series, which is a discipline series. It used to be called Discipline is Not a Dirty Word. The focus of the workshop is really to give parents and caregivers support, to create a nurturing environment in their home, you know, with the help of positive discipline tools. And it's kind of geared towards parents that have children's ages two to 12. So it does encompass some of the middle school population as well, the fifth and sixth grade. Parents and caregivers learn about parenting styles, how to understand their children's behavior and a lot of child development. They do things like effective communication approaches, winning ways to speak with children, things I think a lot of times that we kind of take for granted that new parents don't really always know and they're very upfront, you know, and they're very open to saying, we need this information. How to set realistic limits and also a lot of research-informed practices that they incorporate and talk to parents about. And lastly, the importance of self-care for adults and for their children, which is a piece I think that we're all lacking. You know, remembering that, you know, it's hard to take good care of our kids when we're not taking good care of our own health. Parents have the opportunities with these virtual sessions to break into various breakout rooms. They get to collaborate with other parents, they get to collaborate with the instructor. They learn a lot of valuable resources, they really use it as a time to make connections with other families. I can't tell you, the workshop, they do evaluations every year and the evaluations that they get with the instructors is just very positive, again, which is kind of why we keep coming back to the same series every fall. We occasionally offer them this phrase as well, I think we've been doing those bi-yearly, every other year. And those tend to be a different topic. I think last year when we did it, we did a topic that was more geared towards internet safety and the whole electronics era, all these digital natives and, you know, how to enforce boundaries, how to set realistic limits, how to deal with kids who know how to navigate the electronics better than we do. So we'll probably be doing that again next year. But overall, the feedback has been very positive and it's been a great thing that we did the transition, I think, to the virtual this year in the last couple of years. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. So I'm going to speak a little bit about characters from which is, in the high school, the counselors push in and do a series of lessons. They partner with the science teacher. So because we have a rotating schedule, every ninth-grade student has a lab science they are aware and take for graduation. So that additional lab period kind of rotates in their schedule. So they might have lab on an A day, and then is that on B day, and then on C day. They might have what we call a science study hall, which is like an advisory with their science teacher. So the counselors team up with the science teacher for like a six or seven series, and we kind of come in and we use this particular tool to really help foster self-awareness, managing emotions, very similar in conjunction with the ruler information, how to manage their stress, developing goals, things like that. And so it's just one of the curriculum tools that we use in the work that we do. Ultimately, the work that we do, that we're all doing, is about building relationships. We have students in our classrooms in schools that are dealing with adverse childhood experiences. You guys heard them refer to the ACEs. And what we know about ACEs is that it crosses every socioeconomic background. There's, you know, there's no rhyme or reason in having, you know, the ACEs used in childhood experiences. We've all collectively experienced that through COVID and has affected some students more than others. But the more characteristics or more of these checkmarks or experiences that they have, the more adverse they are. We see that in particular in the high school, although it's across all levels. But one of the most important things that they talk about is these protective factors. And so when we're dealing with students who have this, the most consistent thing is about is a positive relationship with an adult. And I feel like as a resident, as a faculty member, as a parent, this is where our district really does shine. Because time and again, having been here, it's like, you know, a few years, the students do come back and they visit. Kind of a parody of that, an example of that. And although they do come back and they talk about all the wonderful things that they've learned, and they talk about Dorothy Anzley's chemistry class and what that did for them when they got there, by and large, what they're coming back and talking about is the relationships that they have with faculty, with people in our district, and how connected they are, and how that staff member or those relationships have supported and guided them through some really difficult times in their life. So this curriculum was particularly chosen because it sounded during COVID, when they're not during, I was going to say TikTok, it wasn't TikTok, I'm sure. But it was chosen because it kind of supports some of that work, and it really does help us foster those conversations and those connections that we're all so desperately in. Especially right now, coming out of this pandemic, and everybody is here because of, you know, the child and mental health. So it's backed by research. Its focus is really wellbeing, belonging, and engagement because it kind of flips the script a little bit in saying, you know, it's not one more thing on the plate. It is the plate which everything is going on on. So it gets them talking. A lot of the activities are geared at getting, you know, getting them talking, engaging in whatever topic that they're talking about. So it's just one of those things that we use.
So I'll get started on this, and I'll let Mr. Organize take over from there since two out of the three grade levels used are in high school. But the Pride Survey is a non-detective we give to students that allows them to answer questions and answers that really give us a good understanding of the mental health bullying, violence, and substance misuse that our students are experiencing at that current time in their life. And we use this information to evaluate the need for and the effectiveness of the programs that we implement with our students. We work closely with the Coalition. We share the results with them so they know what's going on in the town and can provide programs and resources as well. Personally, in the middle school, we give the students the survey during our physical education classes. And I will turn it over to Mr. Organize.
Thank you. That was a pretty good synopsis there. Thanks, Rayo. Thank you. So the Pride Survey is a great tool that helps us gather school climate data, what Mr. Rayo said, bullying and harassment. It also looks at 50 risk and protective factors as well. But what we didn't mention was that it's eighth, tenth, and twelfth grade. It really helps us track significant longitudinal data and trends across cohorts. So that's pretty important because it's given every two years, like Mr. Rayo said. And that data helps us implement the plans and programs around the student's voice. So they kind of create the lessons that we are implementing. Some examples of the data that Pride Survey collects are risk and protective factors, discipline problems at school and outside school, feeling of safety at school and in the neighborhood, academic achievement, activities at school and in community, family life. And then here are some examples that are actually on the Pride Survey, some questions. Do you get in trouble at school? So and then the choices are never, seldom, sometimes, often, a lot. Do your parents set clear rules for you? Do your parents punish you when you break the rules? Does your school set clear rules on bullying or threatening other students at school? Do you have a cell phone, use the internet to threaten? So these are just, this is just another tool that really helps us implement the programs that we use at the high school and at the middle school as well. And we will be administering Pride Survey again this year. Thank you.
Dad and I are both going to talk about this line. I'm going to be more to, for the crisis that we deal with. Unfortunately, there's some students that might have suicidal thoughts. So we do a lot in terms of training to support our students. All of our clinical staff are trained using the LUCI Suicide Safety Rating Scale, which is the CSSRS. It is an evidence-based tool that's used to assess and then risk of suicide. And it is used in many environments. So for example, it is used in healthcare, it's used in schools, it's used with first responders. The training can also include an app, which is really helpful when you're in a crisis situation and you're not able to get to your office. What's also wonderful about it is that, again, because it's used in so many formats, if we have to make a referral, many times we're using the same language. So making a referral to a hospital, making a referral to Orange County to target mental health, which is a tool that they use as well. So in terms of speaking the same language, we're doing that. So our clinical staff are trained in that. So across the buildings, that's what we're using. Most students are priceless. Our faculty are also trained. There are faculty meetings every year specifically regarding, to be educated and updated regarding suicide statistics, the role and responsibility of school personnel, what risk factors are that we need to be aware of, warning signs, as well as protective factors.
I'm going to continue on with this line. Obviously, this is something, we have different levels of risk. We have different levels of crisis intervention in the school. And this is obviously one of those things that takes precedence over everything else. We've probably done more risk assessments than we would want to admit. I think this is, you know, a serious thing, and it's something that our teachers take really serious. There's a lot of great collaboration between the mental health people in the school, the administration, the teachers, the aides. There's a lot of that common language, common knowledge. So they're really good at coming to us should something happen that is troublesome. There's different kinds of statements, behaviors. Sometimes it can come out of a writing assignment from an ELA class. There's many awesome, a lot of times it comes from a friend, you know, who is, wants to be anonymous, but, you know, my friend said this, or they posted this. So we get a lot of those great tips. We are, make sure to tell the children and remind those kids and students that they're doing the right thing, and that's important to say something if you hear something like that. It's something that obviously we have to take very serious. If the child's in imminent risk, so we go through, again, kind of a standard set of questions. We will work with, obviously, the parents are called regardless. But we work with our staff, and we work with outside facilities to give them the care that they need that a lot of times is not something we do, you know, within the terms of the school. There are times that they need to go to Orwin's, different hospitalizations, some kind of high-level things that we need to monitor and be a part of, and then utilize the supports we have in Orange County to help support that student, to help support that family, and making sure that, you know, they understand that their safety is our number-one priority. And it's really hard to learn if you are not feeling safe and all of those necessities and all those needs aren't being met. So definitely something that is, you know, takes a lot of time and care and confidentiality and responsibility on our part. But the staff do a really wonderful job at, and coming to us should there be a need.
And I do have to share too, students are phenomenal. I mean, they really do care about each other. They are concerned. Sometimes we even get emails from other school districts that someone I mentioned, you know, gave a message that, or there was a concern. So sometimes we're getting calls from the school counselors from other districts that there's concerns, students. So I do have to say, I definitely feel awareness is an improvement with every year, and there is activity towards it. And, you know, students are great, but they can need help and support. So I have to say that it's definitely something that is very impactful and really different moves with every year.
The other part is, you know, crisis response. So kind of like I said at the beginning, there's different levels of crisis, right? So there can be this number-one level where, you know, suicidal behavior, that type of stuff. And then it can be the crisis in the classroom, the, as you described, and maybe the tantrum in the school, refusal to come to school, the refusal to get on the bus. There's all different levels of crises that we deal with on a day-in, a day-out basis. That, I think, we do a really, we try to do a really nice job of having kind of that team approach and making those connections with kids and with families. The collaboration during that time is obviously super important. But there's a lot of crises that can sometimes impact the learning of that student. It can impact the learning of others. We try to provide safe spaces within the middle school. A lot of times it's in the guidance office. I'm sure it's the same at the elementary. I know it's the same at the high school. The nurse's office, different kinds of safe spaces that we can look, when we're trying to de-escalate a situation, maybe get more answers to a situation, collaborate with the parents, have them then come down if that is needed as well. We do offer counseling supports. I think we talked about that earlier. We do have check-in services. We have individual counseling. We do a lot of mandated counseling, you know, through our IBTs, through special education. But there are times where we have, you know, general education students that need those check-ins and need that support. Or we utilize, and I'll let tomorrow talk about this a little more, trying to get them with another service or support on the outside because sometimes more than in-school counseling is needed to deal with certain situations.
Sometimes our crises involve people from building or districts. And unfortunately, these are very, you know, traumatic situations. We have a crisis response team that can be called upon. All of our clinical staff are trained in critical incident stress management training. We use the word acronym or acronym, OCSISM. It is a comprehensive, multi-component intervention system that is used in a variety of settings, including schools and communities. It's a standard of care that includes different types of interventions. Some of the interventions include pre-crisis training, individual crisis counseling, group debriefing, as well as incident referral. In addition to being able to support our whole district in terms of these crises, our clinical staff are also called for our county-wide crisis team. So many times, a district might have very unfortunate information of the past, an old student or faculty member, and we are called upon as forward employees that are on the crisis team to support them, and they're being. So I think that, you know, it's, it's a very humble experience to experience that as a district. But certainly, also, we're humbling to go to the home of another district and meet their faculty members and support them. So I appreciate that we have something that, there are just gaps in terms of the pay with each other as geology leaders. And I guess that's something else that we're very involved in.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. So one thing that we recognize is that despite all the work that occurred about that we're doing in the school, that sometimes we also need to bring in some outside organizations to spread the message and spread the message differently. So this year, the middle school PTA has worked to bring in the organization Mallory's Army. Mallory's Army's mission is to empower kids to be the kind of people that they would want to meet when they're in need. Mallory's Army was formed in July of 2017 after the tragic, unforeseen death of Mallory Rose Rosen who at the young, young age of 12-years-old turned her life after enduring months of bullying at school and online. The organization was created to empower kids to be amazing people, educate parents, bring communities together, and help with schools to help kids understand gangly behaviors and relational bullying. They emphasize that bad things are going to happen. You're going to have struggles in life. You will have a bad day. You may get bullied. But it's how you move forward in life that defines who you are. So we're really very proud to be able to present this program on Monday evening, this coming up Monday. Mr. Yackwoods and I had the opportunity to speak with Diane Rosen and Mallory's mother today. And she is particularly excited about the format that we have decided to go with. We have invited students to come to the middle school in grades, students in grades five through 12, to attend a viewing of the film, Mallory's film, with a parent. Oftentimes, when we do these types of events, we'll do it in school, and the students will get the message. And then we invite the parents to come in in the evening for a parent component. You get probably maybe 12 parents. And a student comes home with one message, and then the parent is interpreting that message. Providing the opportunity for our parents and children to sit and watch the film together not only will allow, this is what, Miss Rosen is very upset about this, SMI, it will allow families to have this conversation together because they've all experienced, had this experience. And then allow us, the school, to know that we can talk to both the student and the parents openly about that because we've all had this common experience. So we are really excited to be able to provide this to all of our families in the district coming up on Monday. So there's still two openings. If anybody wants to attend, bring it sure. It's going to be a very powerfully emotional, informative evening.
Good evening, everyone. I want to talk a little bit about a couple of the alerts in the district council, please. I'm sure we're all familiar with the phrase, if you see something, say something. And I don't mind if you would devil-saying a couple minutes ago about the importance of encouraging students to come forward with it or something. So one of the systems the district has in place is anonymous alerts. And it gives the school community the opportunity to provide the district with any critical information regarding the bullying of students without having to disclose their identity. There's a link at the bottom of the district website that's available to report any behaviors that, sorry, that could compromise the personal safety of a child in the district. And the administrators receive these alerts, and they're able to take those alerts and conduct any investigations that they see that might seem necessary to help that child. The district also has twice words. So this is the software that examines and monitors the language on school devices. So students have Chromebooks or they're on their own personal device and login with their district email. What it does is, so let's say a student is typing an essay in Google Docs, or they're using a search engine, or they're using Google Chat, kind of filters through the words that they're using and the phrases that they're using. And it flags any words or phrases that might allude to self-harm or any type of threat or any behavior. And it sends it over to the administrator. So once the administrators receive those alerts, it gives us the opportunity for them to check out the students' school D A. So like, for example, if there's a student who is typing something concerning, maybe the family has no idea what's going on. They have no idea. And now we partner with the families in order to provide the students the support that they need. But there's also the chance that us could be doing a research for our mental health, and some of the research history could get flagged. But I kind of think of the phrase like, they're safe and sorry. And I think that both of these smaller systems help us ensure that we stay safe.
As we know, school services are aimed at supporting the whole student. And if a child's basic primary needs and safety needs are not being met, they're going to struggle significantly academically, but also socially, emotionally. And many families don't always have the resources or the knowledge or understanding to have to deal with a situation or best support their child when they're in a crisis mode. It becomes a lot different. We offer many services in our district. We're very fortunate. We have a lot of supports in place for students and for their families. I'm going to kind of briefly go through some of the elementary resources that we have in place to give people an idea of what we offer. In addition to the whole class lessons that we talked about earlier, we have a number of counseling groups. You know, both support groups such as Banana Spoons, which is a support group for kids that are... that are struggling, handling challenges that may arise in families as a result of separation or divorce. And those are support groups, not counseling groups per se. But we also offer, you know, a lot of counseling groups. We offer social skills groups where students are given the opportunity to have more attention and work in smaller groups to practice some of the skills that they may need that may be kind of hindering them in the classroom, with their peers. All these services do require parental consent. We also have a lot of counseling groups that come and arise as a need through IST, which is our instructional support team that we spoke about earlier, through the Committee of Special Education or 504 Plan. And those groups are based on what the student needs are. You know, those groups can vary. It could also be individual counseling based on a student being in crises, a student who is significantly struggling. It could be check-ins, like Deva alluded to, at the middle school. So it's not always an ongoing thing, but just checking in periodically with the kids. We also have a lot of services that I'm not sure everybody's always aware of, but resources that are outside of our buildings, but they are county-wide services such as IET, which is an intensive day treatment program, it's a therapeutic program, it's a short-term program, it's a 30 to 45-day program for students who may be in crisis. It could be they need to go there to prevent hospitalization, or we sometimes have students who are in hospitals that need to make the transition back to school, but they're not ready to do that. So this is kind of a transitional program for them. They're getting a much more significant amount of services. They're getting counseling on a daily basis. They're getting group counseling multiple times a week, and they're in a smaller setting. It's often a six-to-one-to-one setting. So it's six students, one classroom teacher at the IET program, and one social worker. And the social worker's office is actually connected to the classroom, so they're also able to respond to crises and help the student at any time. The goal of the program is to transition the kids back to their home school, wherever that may be, whether it be the elementary school, the middle school, or the middle school. There's also a program called SPARC, which stands for Supplemental Program for Academic Students. This is a little bit lengthier of a program, but it's also a therapeutic program. It's a 60, 60 to 90-day program to provide students with a supportive environment in this for students that have a lot more significant behavioral management concerns that is probably also impacting their academic performance. Students receive also a lot more services. It's an eight-to-one-to-one program where there's eight students, one counselor, and a psychologist, or a social worker, and there's also a consulting psychiatrist on the team to kind of work with the families and to work with the student and the school staff. IET also has a treating psychiatrist on their team. That was the 30-day program. And they have a treating psychiatrist because that psychiatrist kind of needs to be that they's oftentimes between child psychiatrist, the hospital if they're coming out of a hospitalization, or helping the family, connecting them to a psychiatrist who's going to continue to work with them after their transition out of IET, whether it be back to the school or whatever that program may be. There are times often where the student is not ready to come back or transition back to their home school. IET or SPARC may make a referral or a recommendation to the district to go to the Committee of Special Education to kind of, you know, have a meeting, maybe to kind of determine the best place or what the student's needs are. Lastly, I think a lot of times we don't really hear a lot about this because it's a lot of behind-the-scenes kind of stuff, but we work on a constant basis with, you know, collaborating with families to kind of help connect them to outside referrals. And I know we've talked about it, but those outside referrals could be outside counseling. It could be preventative services such as Maripete, which is affiliated with the county. It could be psychiatrists, it could be support groups, even connecting families that are new to the district with just community activities, people that are feeling a little isolated or disconnected coming to a new district. So a lot of that stuff just happens all the time on a regular basis, just not a lot of those things that we just talk about, we just hear about.
What we have noticed, I think if you ask any administrator, if you ask the men, if you ask any clinical person in the schools, the mental health needs have increased dramatically over the past few years, and with the pandemic and coming out of COVID, I think it's just kind of shedding a new light on all of that. And I think it just underscores the importance of having all of, all of us collaborating and work together and be able to provide those supports with families. We've also noted that, you know, sometimes it's not always a function of a diagnosis, and maybe they don't have a diagnosis for, for a cause of that, and then there's times where there's situational things. And again, a lot of those have maybe shed a little more light after, after COVID and kind of getting back into the swing of things, where it has been problematic. We've seen it, and a big echo, tomorrow and I were talking this morning in preparation, just the jump in terms of anxiety, you know, I think that's the one we talk about a lot. Kids who weren't anxious are now anxious. Kids that were anxious are now really anxious. And being able to find all of those supports, and I think when we talk about them, they sound great, and we have, you know, different kinds of programs that we can utilize, different kinds of levels of service that we can utilize. But one of the things that we find that is a real problem and a real struggle is there's a lot of kids that need, and there's long waiting lists, and sometimes it's hard, your insurance doesn't take maybe who has availability, and we can't find somebody right there. I think if we had some psychiatrists move to Orange County, they could make a great living up here because sometimes those type of supports that we need aren't as accessible as we wish they were. But I think we do a really nice job, I think, having, you know, the Office of Mental Health and different kinds of tie-in. I know even through the Committee on Special Education, sometimes they need that longer-term placement, and programs are thinking through that, and we've made some great connections in Warwick with other districts and other programs within other districts to be able to utilize those supports. But the reality is, and you know, I know we've been talking about this all night, it's an ongoing concern, and it's an ongoing thing that we need to continue to work at and continue to put things in place to help these kids and to make sure that they're getting the services that they need. I know tomorrow's going to talk a little bit, the high school sometimes has a couple different needs that we may not need as much, but she can go ahead and open that.
So I know that it's been noted, some of the supports that we've adjusted with the community, Maripete definitely, definitely, to explain it a little bit more, avoiding the recommendation of call and the, or, oh, sorry. Can you guys hear me? Thanks, thank you. So IET coordinator is assigned to the family, they meet with the family in our home, they're able to really assess what the needs are, and the needs are typically not just for that student. A lot of times it really involves the entire family, parents, siblings. And so then they're able to offer and link that family with services in the community. As, you know, Deva mentioned, it's really challenging to get families linked with therapeutic supports, and so sometimes they can help that embrace that gap for them. But there are also other programs that we utilize, System of Care, the Orange County Department of Mental Health, Access Support for Living is another agency, the Mental Health Urgent Care, which there's located in Middletown, the Mobile Mental Health Unit, which will come to a family's home and assess the child, make recommendations. Obviously, our Savile Clinic, which is in our, our district, which has been, you know, a wonderful help to us. And I have to say, we spend a lot of time working with a lot of these outside resources and learning about what they have to offer and really trying to help find the correct match with families and what their needs are. Orange County Department of Mental Health also is helpful for just questions. So like, sometimes I feel like I'm hitting a wall, and I'm trying to find all of these resources for families, and it's just not, you know, just not getting them what they need. So many times reaching out to these resources and just saying, listen, our kid needs this, and they have this insurance, and they're really struggling, transportation is an issue, they need trauma and more therapy, you know, specific issues or concerns, and a lot of the people that I speak with, maybe they don't have the answer, but they know who to tell me to call. So there is a great deal of time that we spend just making these connections in the community to better help and support our families in need. I know that Jeanette has spent a great time talking about IET, and that's another program of collaborative that we both used, that certainly the high school utilizes a great deal. And usually our support as a liaison is typically the school counselor or the school psychologist will be the liaison. And when the child is, you know, in those programs, you know, again, we spend a great deal of time working with the families, the teachers, the students, and sometimes we even have meetings with the students just to make sure that they're, you know, able to access whatever it is in terms of curriculum, they're making progress. We have meetings with the staff to make sure that not only educationally, but also therapeutically they're making progress. At the high school, we also utilize another collaborative program that we both use for restart, and these are for our students that have drug and alcohol addictions that need to be supported. So this is an opportunity for them to, for a short-term period of time, get some really good therapeutic support as well as academic support, and then gradually transition back to our schools. So we get really great supports that we have, and a lot of our students are utilizing them.
Okay, so this is our last slide, and we looked at community partnerships, and you may say, community partnerships, and how does that tie into students' mental health? And as a team, we felt very strongly about including this in our presentation because we've said it time and time again, how important sense of community and belonging is to our students to build that confidence and to establish a sense of pride and understanding of who they are and who's around them to support them. On the elementary level, along all the levels, we talked about the Backpack Snack Attack, where we partner with Warwick Reform Church, and they bring backpacks full of food for students in need weekly for students K through 12 that really need that support. And we talk about being ready to learn, and students that are hungry and don't have resources, this provides them with that opportunity, that little extra that they need, as well as it gives our entire student body, I know at the elementary level, and I, I know on the upper grades as well, all of our students the opportunity to participate in the program by donating to the Backpack Snack Attack, whether it's actual food items, whether it's different things that they can donate to the church, or financially donating. We do a lot of fundraisers for Backpack Snack Attack, so it's a win-win situation for all. Again, on the elementary level, being able to participate through our Leadership Club at San Ramon or our Student Council at Park Avenue, where our leaders, our student leaders rally the troops to provide opportunities to get involved with the community in fundraising and donating to, whether it's the Mustard Seed or Four Seasons that collect pajamas, socks for students working closely with the Rotary right now to collect jackets, really feel like they belong and that they are helping make a difference. Being able to outreach with our first responders and our veterans and making those connections, also learning about the past of our town, and really understanding the history of Warwick through working with our Historical Society, and of course, our partnership on the elementary level with the Rotary, with the Dictionary Project, and them sponsoring the spelling bee, and the Rotarians come in and they meet the kids and talk to the kids. It's a great opportunity to make those connections and give our students that sense of belonging.
You took all my stuff. I'm sorry. I think the wonderful thing about Warwick and through my tenure here is that it truly is a community, and all of the community partnerships that we have within the school really truly do help kids feel part of it. And we, at the middle school, have Backpack Snack Attack. We work with the Historical Society, we work with the Rotary Club, and we have all of these community entities coming into the building and working with our children. And one that's near and dear to my heart is our Prevention Coalition. They come in, I think some of, they're in the building almost as much as I am, working with our students. And I'm at, we're at a point now where I look at our Youth Coalition, and we're looking at students in fifth and sixth grade who would be great additions to the Youth Coalition, and seeing our students that started in fifth or sixth grade with the Youth Coalition, and seeing them as seniors now graduating, and all the work that they're doing to, to help their community and bring it back around full circle is really, it's just a blessing to, to see all of that happen in the community. So our community partnerships are huge. I think that picture, just looking at that picture right there, I think that says a tremendous amount about Warwick schools and Warwick and the work of the town, seeing all those people out to celebrate our children and to support our children. I think that picture kind of really says it all.
All right. I totally stopped. So along the lines of, we also do Backpack Snack Attack, the same format that Marjorie Johnson brought out, but we also have an empty bowls club at the high school. An empty bowls is a, it's actually a national organization, and it's a club that's run at the high schools, usually with an art teacher, where kids will use their ceramics, and they make these beautiful bowls, and bought quite a few. Every year, they, they set up different events throughout the year, but they have one night where they have the empty bowl sale, and they raise a lot of money and should donate it to food banks in the local area. So that's really their drive is, is to support local food banks. A lot of times when they make bowls, they put dry soup in it, or recipes, so that you actually get this bowl for, for empty bowls. So that's one thing, you have to do that connects back to the community in terms of hungry families that are in the area. We also have quite a bit of civic engagement. I think that I still, we have more opportunities to connect with local governments, give a lot of kids to internships with local government relationships and politicians locally, going for the town board and village board that will ask, ask for recommendations for students to be on different boards or different committees for things that, for things that they're working on within the town. And I think they give kids a great feeling of pride when they walk by the town park and say, hey, I, I picked out those pensions, or I helped plan those treatments, or, you know, whatever part they had in, they really do feel like they're giving back to their community. We have veterans come in and speak with our kids every year at Veterans Day, and students get to learn about a whole different generation that, you know, they haven't, they haven't heard a lot of these stories before. These heroes in our community really give a big impact on the students. And last year, we asked them to just, you know, write a few words to say what they learned and thank them, and I think, what do we have, like 36 pages of comments and saying to the kids, and then this year we have more coming in, more veterans coming in, it'll be an all-day event, and then walking through the backpacks. It's a really nice connection that's made. Our CTE program is really involved in our community. Our video production, kids work with local businesses and commercials, but they also work in civic terms. They're having an event, a lot of times they'll call up and say, if you could send someone down to do this, and, you know, we're always willing and happy to help them out. It helps our kids get their hands-on hours that they're required to do, but it also gives access to the community. Our, our criminal justice kids will, will provide security in some sense, even if it's just giving directions or help parking or whatever it is, they stake out the areas ahead of time, and they, they give back. Usually I hope that they're pretty involved in helping, helping out the dead community. Usually I hope that they're pretty involved in helping, helping out with that community. And even our cosmetology kids, they have an open salon every couple of weeks, and they actually have a customer base. So a lot of these, a lot of people come in, it's a free air cuddle, shave, or whatever, manicure, and they are, you know, they're starting to make connections with people who don't have kids, who come in for their, for their pampering, and our kids love them. So they're excited, and they, and they feel proud when they keep getting salesmen and stuff like that, so that's always nice. Our FFA has always been contributing to the community, they provide ribbons and plants in town and for different events. You go to go see our kids, and Auntie Paul can help there, tying really ribbons and swag to the parking meters at different points in the year. With volunteering, our students are required to have 20, a minimum of 20 hours of volunteering throughout high school, which we log, but a lot, a lot of community organizations reach out, there's an event, we have the dinners out at Pine Island, and a lot of kids everywhere that they show up to help out, but, I mean, a tremendous amount of opportunity, and local agencies call all the time. Most of our kids receive their principals award, superintendent's award for having a tremendous amount of volunteer hours. Also, our, our athletics, we often invite our local community recreation programs to come join in the football games, basketball games, and join the high school kids, and make them feel part of, of our community, our school community. And we were at the football game when the kids lived out of one night, and it was just adorable to see them running, big sign, you know, with these big football players, and it was just so exciting. We also, as George said, we work with the Coalition, and I too feel like they're in the building as much as we are at this point, especially with the Red Grid coming up. But our Interact Club is huge in our school, and Interact deals, you know, they work with the Rotary, coming up on the holidays, we'll be, we'll be collecting food for Thanksgiving for families, we'll be adopting kids at the holidays for, to have gifts and clothes and toys for maybe families that are struggling right now. Last year, fundraising was done for Ukraine. So it's not just local issues, world issues, one appropriate. And I think that the biggest, I guess I'm the lucky one here, that I can say that the biggest community event is our Awards Night, where we celebrate, every year, the community comes together and, and offers our students financial assistance, and celebrates their academic, their volunteering, and just a slew of different things that we celebrate that our kids have come to show for their quarters at the high school, and it's just a wonderful night. And every year, we get more, we get more people who just want to give to our kids to celebrate, and so, so that's our community partnerships. Thank you.
So thank you so much for the opportunity to come tonight. I know it was very long, but I think your, your quote goes with the mindfulness moment, turn it over, questions straight out. If any, if you have anything to say for receiving a mental health illness, isn't a singular program, it's not one person, it's not, you know, one event, it's ongoing, it's embedded throughout the fabric of our schools, structural practices. So we would encourage any community members to reach out to their students' schools if they're struggling. If you don't know where to start, starting from students guidance council, starting from local principal, you know, there is support within the school community, and if it's not in the school community, we can, of course, connect to, connect to and support the making. So we follow your questions, and then I know there's going to close this out with the mindfulness moment, so come us all and report it out.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening. And I think he said it well, that it certainly is a comprehensive approach, and it's nice to see the consistency throughout the district regardless of, of the elementary school, for example, at the level. There really has been a lot of thought put into that, and I think that's certainly important. Also, really, the fabric of this plan that you shared this evening has been something that you've been working on for several years. While we all recognize the increase in mental health concerns nationally, probably throughout the world, pandemic, it's great that we were able to implement some of the, whether Tier One, Two, Three supports. I know that you still are enforcing the code of conduct, obviously, when there's misbehaviors, and showing the sort of the cause and effect there for students, but it's nice to hear that addition to that, there's also a lot of coaching that goes into place, so it is a true learning opportunity for students, and not just an "I got you." And, you know, but I also implore you and really encourage you at the building level, obviously, when your clinicians have spoke this evening, the psychologists, the counselors, et cetera, you foster those relationships with families that are quite special and overlooked, so I want to recognize that this evening. They're confidential, and there's a lot behind the scenes that goes on to support those that are in crisis or at risk. I mean, I want to congratulate you for your, your role that you do day in, day out. No one does it better than clinicians we have here in Warwick. I also want to add, that adds, you know, this evening, you know, this topic is gaining national attention for a lot of great reasons, and that's, that's important. But with that said, I think anytime that there's any intervention or curriculum or program that's offered to all students, that we continue to do our, our best in the ESJ parent and to educate, provide opportunities for parents to learn more, so they can, you know, feel comfortable about the approach as well as support at home, and if factor of the house perhaps as well, if it's beneficial there. And whether it's the Yale model or character Ed that's been, you know, around for a while, I certainly feel that what's in place is really best interest of the children. There's a lot of thought, you know, given to when it's offered, how it's offered, in lieu of what it might substitute. So thank you so much for that. I'm sure the board has questions or...
It was extremely comprehensive.
So I want to thank everybody for being here this evening. You know, all professionals and experts in the field and dedicated at that. Like we've reiterated many times, pandemic created a challenge that was unforeseen to some extent, and then became foreseen, and we continued to trade, and here we are. There's no way we could, we have now. So Warwick, is there anything that, as I'm listening, is there one or two things that you think the administration, the Board of Education, what we can do to better serve the community, our students, our students? Because I hear a lot of comprehensive programs in place, are they making a difference? Are they effective? Or, or we got to jot down? What do you think? Any, any thoughts there?
Okay, we have one class, so I can pass it them a little bit, and you can do some homework this morning, because I, I think because it's ever-changing, and I think the issue or the challenge that we're having right now is trying to address the depth and the breadth of the need that we have that's being presented. And that is, everybody on the clinical team, it, it, because it is sort of community-based in students, but we're also looking out for our colleagues, for our adults, for the parents, kind of that's, you know, the support. So, so I think in terms of like, need, you can figure out a way to get psychiatrists up in this area, and you can figure out, you know, the community, and get services that we can, you know, because a lot of times what we're finding is that, you know, we're getting called, like, we're making referrals, giving all this in relation to families, and they're calling us doctors, and I called 10 people, and they have an opening in January. My kid's in crisis now. And so that, that student needs to be addressed, and we're filling the gaps of those needs, when, you know, for some of us, that's, you know, a bit out of our range, but we don't have everything that we can do to address that, so I think that's, that's the challenge and unfortunately, the frustration that we'll share in our, in our department, like, "Oh, I don't know what we need." I mean, there's a tremendous amount of collaboration between the buildings and people, like, "Well, it's going to fall." So that's, that's kind of what I see in terms of, as I think this challenge is just we don't have enough support, and it's not just, it's not just our clinical team here, it's just nationwide, there's just not enough people to serve the need right now.
You know, Bill, prior to the pandemic, you know, I sat in this room, we, there was a tough budget season, so we had the community member to come and say, "Why, you know, why do you have four psychologists? Why do you have five, six?" Whatever. The board and the community have invested in mental health physicians. We have more psychologists on staff, more school counselors, you know, on staff than we did in the past. So I think that that's been helpful, it's probably never enough, kind of feeling. And of course, it's all about quality as well, certainly quantity, but that's an investment that was important. And it was a question, I'm sure board members will remember that.
But I would also say, as being a medical field, mental health is definitely underserved in this community. And I mean, as Orange County and North, and try and find spots, I see physicians do it all the time, trying to find spots for the patients, and they're either churned, they don't take insurance, their insurance, they, they have to go someplace far where they can't, they have to wait four or five months. I've seen a lot of people do some televisions and stuff like that, but that's abandoned, you know, where you need long-term, you know, mental health care. It's not just you, it's, it's every school district, and it's also the private, you know, physicians.
Absolutely. It's not, it's not a worry.
It's not just a worry.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's where the community then goes to school, because they don't know where else to go, you know, so that's a little bit their, you know, the nutrition provider, and that's the only, that's the only system there. So I do see, I certainly see that in high schools, they're not getting called elsewhere, so they don't have school, and so they're, and we do work that system every way we can.
Are you seeing that, Jocelyn, in the county?
Uh, yeah, there's a huge waitlist in all the, all the satellite schools, there's a, I'm sorry, there's a waitlist in all the satellite, satellite clinics in school districts.
Do you have a waitlist here?
No, I don't have it.
Not yet.
Sorry. She just got here, so we're, 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 we're having to get into the school.
There's a waitlist to get places into the school?
Correct, so we're fortunate to have full salary coming here, because there's school districts that are on a waitlist to even get a person like Jerry, this one's we in our school district, to provide a, to assist students and families.
Yeah. I've had a couple of districts reach out and ask me about your services, and I think, you know, the pandemic may have been a catalyst for that, so it's great that we have this most standing relationship.
But I think that does highlight the fact that Warwick has always put an emphasis on mental health, and it's been important. And I think sometimes for parents and families, you don't understand the importance of the service until it's your kid, right? Until you're experiencing that crisis, and it's really hard to explain to another family what that feels like day in and day out. So it is, we are appreciative of the fact that you've always been there to kind of support the mental health, you know, to have more, like you said, more psychologists, more guidance counselors, and more support that way, because of, like you said, a lot goes on behind the scenes that people will never know, see, hear about, because it is confidential, it is private, and it's, you know, a family matter a lot of the time, so.
This is kind of part of your question, part of your question was, "Is it working?" And I think what, what I noticed in my tenure here is that, like, when I first got here, vaping was a huge, a huge issue and concern, and we were, kids were vaping in school, and we had kids doing that, and then we embarked on all of these community partnerships, brought in the coalition, did a bunch of parent education about it, did teacher education about it, kind of cracked down on some things, brought in certain technology to, 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 to test, take smoking, that, or something like that, and now that's not such an issue anymore. Unfortunately, something else to explain. But I think to answer your, to speak to your question, in my experience, I found we, all of these things were common, had to play together. They do work, and we work on one thing, and then that's why we had a crisis, basically, we see what's the new thing coming up, so now we're, we focus our efforts on that.
And I'd like to just answer that, sorry, to answer that question as well. A lot of what we heard tonight, whether it be a partnership or approach, strategy, whatnot, there are tools that kick in when there's a problem, childhood crisis or whatnot. But a lot of what we heard about, it was to foster a great school culture, where kids are happy when they come to school. And again, being very unsophisticated, I can tell you that kids go on to school happy every day, and I see kids being kind to each other and willing to step up and help, and to that extent, I think, you know, I can answer very assertively, yes, I see positive evidence that things are working.
The thing that I appreciated about the entire presentation is that there's, it seems like there are two things happening in our district, right? There's responding to crises, which involves an enormous amount of complexity and individual attention, but even though there's more demand on all of you, we haven't given up with the preventative piece, right? So there are all those things in place to give kids the resources to be, to have a foundation to respond, perhaps in a more stronger way, once those crises come. And I think that that's something to be, that is, is really impressive to hear, you know, in this kind of presentation, that both things are happening at once, when it would be very easy to kind of give up the preventative piece in order to really focus completely on what is really a crisis for, for almost all school districts in terms of exactly what you were talking about, Mary, you know, like, that there are things that are out of control, but external resources that are just plain limited and difficult for, for the district to really think about. But that was an observation, that was a question, but it was just something that I found really impressive about the work that we all do.
Any other questions?
So we did go through some mindfulness moment suggestions, we did reach out to some...
Maybe you're fine, maybe you're fine.
I was going to say, but it was principal, yeah. But Mary's just going to walk us through this to close out.
I'll make it quick, because I'm looking at the clock, and I know the answer's one, so. A lot of what we're, this is a lot, there's a lot, sorry, a lot, a lot to process, a lot to absorb, it's a heavy topic, and so we're just going to do a very quick reading practice. I'm sure you guys are all pretty well aware, you know, the first thing you tend to do all along is to get, like, real solid, you think you're correct, right? And there's real science behind that, and I have a whole spare role that does that right now, but what I'd like you to do, just for a moment, just entertain me, is to just kind of, just kind of notice where you're sitting, you have to adjust, adjust, you know, all the time. Usually when I say that, everybody does that, so sit however you're most comfortable. No judgment or anything like that, but we're just going to take a moment and just feel comfortable closing your eyes, please feel free to do so. Not everybody's comfortable with that, but that's okay. And just kind of be still for a moment. And as you're sitting there, just notice your breath. How it expands in your lungs. Notice how your feet are feeling against the floor. Notice where the tension is in the back, where your shoulders are. Just notice your breath. There's a lot of lies, a lot of thoughts, just notice them on the top, the throat, project. Can you guys see the breathing through your nose? Expand your lungs. Exhale out. Ready? Close your eyes, just back to the ground. So if you read that a little bit longer with the kids, like, it just does change energy. Your shoulders relax a little bit.
Mary, did John do it?
I suppose, right? He's sleeping, but that goes away.
John was right now, but John was actually right now.
Thanks for playing along, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's all right.
Thanks for playing along.
I wanted to get you so old as all night, so I'm worried about you. Well, thank you again. Now this is... If you're going to come, just a second, I'll make the motion and everybody can go. I'm going to call this a special meeting of the Board of Education to wear and I'm going to ask that every member stand for the motion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters that are open and gentlemen, through federal law, family and education rights and privacy act. And Bill, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. There will be no further action after the executive session. Thank you, everybody. I'm ready. I can't take it.